For reflection before we get started. Now, thank you for everyone that is here today to support our schools. We give thanks for many blessings and our wonderful staff and our students. Help us to work together to promote our community. Guide us with new ideas and direction that will benefit us all. Grant us understanding and wisdom and allow us to accept other ideas and suggestions. Bless all that lend a nurturing hand to our students and provide a safe learning environment. We come to you and ask for healing and support for all those recently affected by the tornadoes in Tennessee. Help those of us who were so fortunate to give our time and resources to help those folks that were not. In your name we pray. Amen. Would you two like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? If everyone will stand face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'd like to ask Leah Parsley come up to the microphone. I believe it's on the second row right now. And tell us who we're about to hear from.
This year, we have had the pleasure of having Ms. Mary McCartney join us as our music teacher. She has come in and she has dedicated her pretty much life for our school. She comes in at seven o'clock every morning, has Ukulele Club. She created the Ukulele Club, a band, and a chorus. And today, we have brought a few of our students to show you what they have learned from Ms. Mary McCartney. We'll turn it over to her this time. So, I've just heard a couple of them are moving because some play in the Ukulele and in the band. I just want to let you know that the Ukulele Club has only been playing since October 8th. And they have, besides some songs, four songs that you've been here today, they have about ten, between ten and twelve songs that they have under their belts already. We're getting ready for our next gig. And we also have, can you turn it on? We also have an electric bass Ukulele. Uh, quite funny. Yeah, good. Light loud for 'em. Ready, girls? And the bells, the bands, they play, they're playing bells now for our Christmas program, but they're also learning to play the drums and the xylophones and the recorders as well. So, stay tuned for some of them too.
(music)
Thank y'all very much. That was absolutely wonderful. And thank you, parents, for bringing and supporting your children and our schools. That means a whole lot. This is the biggest group we've had here. Especially at a happy time. So, we appreciate that.
Nobody's mad. Yay.
And hope y'all have a great Christmas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We were worried about you.
Made my day.
Oh, I can put her down.
Now, I had to come to the back. Happy birthday.
Thank you.
Robert's birthday, y'all.
I waited since twenty-one.
Yeah, twenty-one.
Eighty-one.
I thought you were tween.
Finally, legal.
Crazy scream.
Look out, Melrose.
We're glad you're here and you're okay.
Don't want to disturb and come through there.
What a day. The future of our country right here.
Do you guess if I want to stick around?
I guess we're not entertaining enough. Everybody had to leave.
I just thought. I'd say that's probably the happiest part of the whole movie, though.
Exactly.
I don't fall right behind them.
Thank you.
Get you more.
Hey, Frida, get those all passed out.
What?
Get those all passed out.
I will. I mean, you will.
I got, I got twelve to.
All right, we'll try to get settled in here. And we have an agenda, but I believe, Ms. Rose, did you wish to?
Yeah, I would, I would like for the board to consider adding one item to the agenda. An item that has been in the news recently is Governor Lee's push to expand the voucher program in Tennessee. TSBA has sent out a suggested resolution in opposition to this. And I would like for that to be on our agenda so we can act on that and decide if we want to be in support of, in support of not doing it.
I'll second that. Okay, so, so we'll just put it on there. So, unless I have any objections, I'll stick it on as number nine as the resolution. We'll look at it. Okay. And so then, that will, that will set our agenda. Now, I'll open the floor to accept the agenda and also pass the general consent items. Mr. Parsley, do we have a second?
Second.
Ms. Rose, okay. Are there any questions on the agenda or the?
Yeah, on the consent items, I would like to remove 2.804.
Do you want to put it down?
For further discussion.
Okay.
Yes. And then, the other one that, I can't remember what number it was. It was the one about the extending the day, the hours, five minutes for teachers. I don't remember which number that was. I'm sorry. I had an emergency call before I came in. Sure, I'm sure, Mr., do you know which one I'm talking about?
I didn't bring my extra policies with me, so, other than what's on the?
It's the one regarding the.
The thirty-five, the seven hours and thirty-five minutes.
Seven point thirty-five, seven hours and thirty-five minutes for teachers.
That would be 1.801.
Okay. That's 1.801.
So, we'll put those as item number ten is 2.804 and number eleven is 1.801. And those will be removed from the consent, but the rest of them will remain. Any other questions? All right, we're going to vote to approve the agenda with the modifications. Ms. Jennifer, will you vote first?
Aye.
We're going to go that way this time. Mr. Parsley? Aye.
Aye. I don't know where he went.
Aye.
He was here a second.
Are you trying to trick us, Dr. Nestor?
You've made one disappear. I know it. So, that passes seven to zero. Okay. Action item number one, CCR-A chiller replacement quote. Mr. Shores, you want this one? Eight to zero. Or he's done here. Gary walked in.
I'll just start with a quick general description of what we have here. If the board recalls, back in August, we had, we had an issue with the chiller at the Raider Academy. It went down for several days and in August, that can sometimes create some challenges in a school building. We were able to find parts that had been refurbished because there are no longer parts made for that particular unit. So, we were able to get it up and running with, with quite a bit of work and, and some expense, but we got that back up and running. But, at that time, we discussed in email communication with the board, discussed that that may, that unit may need to be replaced. And so, what we have here is the quote to replace that particular chiller. And this will be paid using Esser funds. We were able to consolidate some Esser funds and take care of this entire cost. And I guess we'll take any questions as we get there.
Okay, so, this replacing the chiller does come with your recommendation?
It does.
And it would be with the total cost with the labor and warranty, correct?
That is correct.
Is what you recommend, 235,000? All right, so, you've heard the director's recommendation to accept the quote to replace the CCR-A chiller for 235,000. Like to open the floor for a motion?
So moved.
Second. Rose, Mr. Parsley, specific questions about the chiller? I guess just how does that fall under Esser? I've, I've understood different things about Esser, so this, I'd just like to understand this.
We're able to do it under increased air quality. So, we have replaced other units in the district using the same, using the same reasoning on our federal application.
Okay.
And so, it is, this, by making, any, any new unit is going to be more efficient than an old unit in, in moving air and improving, improving the air quality. And so, that's where it comes in underneath that.
Okay.
We have, we have used the same thing to pay for other units in other buildings.
Now, did this have to be moved? Is this something else that had been set aside for something else or?
We had, we had already budgeted some for this, but obviously, prices have come in much higher on everything. And so, we, we had some overages in, in another line where we were able to finish it. I don't. Ms. Melson, off the top of your head, I know we had, we had budgeted for it, it wasn't quite enough. Did you recall where we? We're actually, we had put money aside for outings. That's what it was. Thank you. And we would be using it for, for this. One of the things is, with it being federal funds, you have to go through the Davis Bacon process, which is the prevailing, prevailing wages. And it just, it would work really well to go ahead and move all these together, go ahead and put it all on this one project and finish that part out.
Okay.
It doesn't concern the quote, but will this take care of the problem they had when it was so hot there during the ballgames?
No, that's a different problem. And that should be already taken care of.
What was the problem?
The problem is that the thermostats were on a, an outside wall. And the outside wall was actually cooler, which actually made it feel like it was, the thermostats were cool, which turned the heats on, heat on, and created to, to raise the temperature up in the, the building. The Raider Academy, actually, that was the first time that the Raider Academy gym, since we've done the train changeover, has been used from eight o'clock to five o'clock, and it was packed the entire time. And so, truly, we think we've got it fixed, but until we encounter the same problem, we, we might not know for sure. The other thing that we ran into that day was that the temperatures on the outside, was that hovering of warm and also cool. So, it, it didn't, it didn't create a good area for the air to kick on correctly. And, and that also caused the problem.
It's two different buildings, though, isn't it, Frida? You were at middle school.
No, this is a.
Was it the Raider Academy?
It was at Raider Academy.
Okay.
And, and the chiller does run, well, actually, it does not run the gym.
Someone had said middle school.
The gym at Raider Academy actually has its own two units and it does not run through that part. So, even during the summer, the gym was still in good shape. But that was also during the time we were doing reconstruction to the gym, or renovations to the gym. So, when, when things got very hot in August, we were actually able to keep those units running in the gymnasium and then use fans to move that air down the hall. And that helped when, when our main chiller was out.
So, the thermostats are moved now, so?
The thermostats have been moved.
Did we have to pay for that? I mean, was that our fault or was it the people that installed it?
We, we called them and I said, we, we've got to get something done. And they sent somebody down here and it is fixed. We have not received a bill or anything on it. So, I'm assuming not.
Thank you. More questions about the chiller quote? If not, we're going to vote to approve, accepting the quote, action item number one. Mr. Parsley?
Aye.
Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. That passes eight to nothing. Eight to zero. School calendar, action item number two. Mr. Shores, you want that or Dr. Lawson?
Okay, we, we met as a calendar committee and this includes teachers from all of our schools. And this is the calendar that they took back to their schools, two different calendars. And there were minor changes between the two. And this is the one that they voted in favor to bring to the board to approve for the 25-26 school year.
Okay. Dr. Lawson, does this calendar come with your recommendation?
It does.
Heard the director's recommendation to accept the calendar that we've been presented. Like to open the floor for a motion.
That's a move.
Mr. Cordell made the motion.
Second.
Mr. Parsley. So, it is in, we do have a copy of the calendar, so if there are questions or concerns at this point? Hearing none, we're going to vote to approve the 25-26 calendar. Mr. Ballard?
Aye.
Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. That passes eight to zero. E-rate switch bid, Mr. Dame Wood or?
There's an E-rate swi, switch bid. And this is, we do this every year. This will be the end of our funding cycle. We won't actually have an E-rate project next year. And this is just filling out our closets and, and just to give you a point, we're building out to where every closet, when I mean closet, data closet, is going to have the ability to have what's called smart rate switch ports, which gives your wireless 2.5 gigs or 5-gig compatible speeds. And just to prove a point, over at the high school, we've been working on this for a couple of years. They had eight hun, over 850 at one time take two different tests online using Chromebooks and it, it didn't even break a sweat. So, we've got, we've got a, our network is, that's one, I, I can do refurb computers all day, but with the network, I don't, I don't, because once you put it in, it is what it is. So, we don't skimp on the, but anyway, E-rate pays, remember, 80% of the cost of this. So, our cost would be 20% of that 44,690. So, that's just, E-rate pays 80, we pay 20. So, that finishes up our books and that's the result of the mini-bid process.
Dr. Lawson, does this 2024-25 E-rate bid come with your approval?
It does.
You've heard the director's recommendation to expect, to accept the Central Technologies E-rate, E-rate bid for 44,690. Like to open the floor for a motion?
So moved. Well, second.
Mr. Cordell and Ms. Rose. Okay. Questions about this? Hearing none, we're voting to approve the action item number three, the E-rate switch bid. Mr. Gilli?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. Passes eight to zero. Action item number four, use of facility, CCMS Dream Team 2030 girls. Dr. Lawson, you want to speak on this or?
Well, is Ms. Williams? Okay. Don't think so. Okay, what this is, is this is a request for the use of the facility at the Coffey County Middle School. It kind of follows what we've done before. It's just that this is the first time this request has been made on the new form with the new costs. And this person, Ms. Williams, is requesting a waiver of the custodial fees because, and is aware that it has to be present as, as a, as a employee representative on site at the time of these practices. And, and so, that is, that is what this is. I believe this is primarily local kids, but utilizing this for, for practice. And it, it falls in line with what we've done with several other facilities, including baseball fields at the middle school and that, that kind of thing.
Okay. And so, this comes with your recommendation to?
As, as long as it is, as long as it is.
Worded correctly.
Worded correctly with employee present to waive the fees.
So, we would like to, you've heard the director's recommendation to make a motion for the use of the facilities for?
And let's waive custodial fees. I said waive the fees, but that's waiving the custodial fee.
Coffey County Middle School Dream Team 2030, 2030, with requesting to waive the custodial fees, but a system employee must be present.
So moved.
Second.
Parsley, Ms. Jennifer. Any questions? Not, we'll vote to approve item number four. Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye.
Aye.
This is eight to zero.
I said it again. In case you didn't hear me, I said it again.
All right, action item number five, use of facilities, Coffey County Central High School Dream Team 2029. Dr. Lawson, I assume it's the same, just different school, different age?
It is, it is the same. I think Ms. Cross, yes, Ms. Crossland is here and I believe she can explain kind of, she has made several requests, so these are going to hit. So, if there's, would it be possible for her to discuss the next three items in totality as we go, just to, just as an explanation?
Yep. You want to go ahead and get a motion or does that hurt? You want to go ahead and speak, or you can go ahead and speak about?
As far as, as far as the request of the different facilities, as far as why?
The reasoning why is?
You have to come to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
You're on TV. You're on TV now.
Smile for the camera.
That way, I, I can anticipate there being questions on why there's the same group as requesting the three different gyms. That's what, that's what we're talking about here.
Do I need to introduce myself?
Yes, please. That would be great.
I'm Dina Crossland. I'm a teacher at the high school. I am requesting three gyms due to facility availability. So, I requested the high school, the middle school, and the Raider Academy. Each one of those gyms have already predetermined calendars with sports or other people using them. So, to work with the athletic director and the principal with the calendar that is designated for that gym, it would allow for availability, more availability for practice schedules. For example, if you tried to go to the high school on a Tuesday night, that's not available due to a home basketball game. So, we would need to look at another gym as an option if Tuesday night was our practice night.
And, and I guess we'll need to individually approve each of these and so?
Yes, since they're individual facility use requests, they would need to be approved individually.
Okay.
But, but no, it's, that is, that is correct. Ms. Crossland has explained it. It's just a matter of, she, she has expressed a willingness to work with the athletic directors to make sure that she is able to, to work around and use the facility that will impact the district the least as far as that. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think you did this last year, something similar.
Yes, sir. I did.
We, we did something similar, but we're still on that cycle of getting these on the, onto the new form.
Yes, I just wanted to know. So, and these would all come with your recommendation, all?
Yes, sir, all three of them.
So, you've heard the director's recommendation to allow the use of the facilities at Coffey County Central High School Dream Team 2029 with the custodial fees waived as long as a school employee, a system employee is present. Like to see a motion?
Second.
Ms. Jones? Mr. Parsley? Any questions? Ms. Rose?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Chair votes aye. That passes eight to zero. All right, we'll go to number six. Like to open the floor for a motion to allow the use of facilities at Coffey County Middle School Dream Team 2029 with the custodial fees waived as long as a system employee is present.
That's a move.
Mr. Cordell?
Second.
Ms. Rose? Any questions? Vote to approve action item number six, the use of facilities. Ms. Jones?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. That one passes eight to zero. Action item number seven, use of facilities, Coffey County Raider Academy Dream Action item number seven, use of facilities, Coffee County Raider Academy Dream Team 2029. Would like to request that that be approved, waiving custodial fees, and as long as a system employee is present. Entertain a motion as such.
I'll move.
Ms. Rose.
Second.
Ms. Jennifer. Any questions on the last one, any more questions for Ms. Crossland? Hearing none, action item number seven, Ms. Jennifer.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, that passes eight to zero. Thank you, and good luck. In your scheduling. Action item number eight, the budget update. Ms. Nelson.
This is the budget update as of October. So far for October, we've received 25.36% revenue compared to last year of 22.45%. For expenditures, we've used 29.74% compared to year-to-date of last year of 26.21%. Budget is on track, pretty much the same notes I would have had the last several months. I'll take individual questions if you guys have them.
Dr. Lawson, this budget update comes with your recommendation to accept this budget update. All right, you've heard the director's recommendation to accept this budget update. Like to open the floor for a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Ms. Cordell. Questions specifically on the budget? All right, we're gonna vote to approve the budget update that we presented. Mr. Parsley.
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, the budget update passes eight to zero. Action item number nine, this was the resolution that was asked to be put on. And Dr. Lawson, do you have?
Well, we had some copies, but we did not want to put it out there until we knew it was gonna be on the agenda. I will speak, I guess I'll pick up my microphone before I speak about it. Let me. I'll let you look over this, and then we will progress now. Anybody needs one? Let me, I'll go back to my microphone, and I'll try to speak about this and give a brief synopsis. All of a sudden I realize I don't have time. Thank you. Okay, I gave away all of them. What we have here, the governor has proposed expanding the voucher program in the state of Tennessee. Currently, it is eliminated, it's, it is limited to four different areas. It was three, a fourth got added, Hamilton County got added to the voucher program at the la, in the last legislative session. Now currently, there is, there's no proposal at this time. The legislative session will be starting up in the winter, early spring. And the governor has proposed legis, he is proposing to, that legislation be crafted to make this statewide. Now, what that would mean is that, well, and it's hard to predict, because the legislation has not been created yet. There are lots of rumors. It would at least impact state funding. It is possible that legislators could craft language so that state funding and local funding was impacted. But I would be moderately surprised at that, but you never know. So it's, it's not known yet, but it is, and if you saw the email from TSBA, it came out late last week. That's why this was not on the agenda as an action item. It came in after the agenda was approved and distributed. But, but we, we took, TSBA provided a template, and we simply added our information in there to make it accurate. And this, there is almost no doubt that this will impact funding for public school districts across the state. That's why TSBA is involved in the legislative effort. And what will happen is potentially, sorry, potentially money will be, a voucher system would provide to families who are doing homeschool or private school. But there is, there is little doubt that it will impact negatively on the finances of public school districts. And so how much would also be determined by the final language in the, in the legislation. Now, TSBA has asked for a timely action on this, so that's why we're trying to get it in now, if necessary. And we just wanted you to have a chance to look at it. And if, if you decide to move this direction, the board can, and this is a resolution, it will be sent to TSBA who will help distribute it. I, I think generally our resolutions are also sent to our elected officials and that kind of thing. But, but that's where we are right now. I, I don't know, obviously, any board member can speak up on their personal feelings on this topic when it comes to that time.
Would this sign this resolution or supporting this resolution come with your recommendation?
It would.
Okay, you've heard the director's recommendation to approve the resolution that we have been presented. And so I would like to open the floor. Any motions?
Move, we send it. Expeditiously.
Ms. Rose made a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second, Ms. Jones. Okay, now, questions about this resolution?
I would just like some information. I know that the proposal for, for the vouchers, what they're calling it, is approximately $7,500 for a child, and the state allows approximately $5,500 per child for public schools, is that correct?
Yeah, again, it's hard to answer, because depending upon how the legislation is written, it will, it could change that some. But the amounts that you mentioned are in line with what the leading idea is, but yes, it's in the?
So the voucher would be approximately $2,000 more than what we're receiving for a public school child?
I?
This, if it was, if it were in place now?
That I don't, that I don't know. What is the, the current TESA allotment is more like 60?
Okay.
6860.
Okay.
And so I believe what we're, you know, I mean, what we're hearing are some numbers on a conjecture of an inflation-adjusted thing.
But it is less.
What we're hearing is about, what I have heard is about $7,000, which is kind of what's expected that, you know, the TESA allotment inflation will cause that to go up slightly, and we're already at 6860. So it wouldn't be out of the realm of possibility that the voucher would be somewhere in the $7,000 range.
And the 6860 is just the ADM base amount? So that doesn't include any modifiers?
That is the base amount without, without modifiers.
Okay.
So we don't know yet what the financial impact would be yet on our system.
Do we know how much? No. Do we know that the vouchers will take state funding that could otherwise be used for public education? Yes, we just don't know the dollar amount.
Am I correct? Go ahead.
You go ahead, Ms. Gilli.
That hinges on losing students, correct?
That, what that does, and again, it depends upon how they?
Pulls from our pocketbook if somebody leaves here, goes to homeschool or goes to a different school. That money just follows that cha, that kid.
At, at least that is what has been proposed at this time, yes.
Jones, go ahead.
And it's my thinking that the first employees that would be cut would be things such as librarians and things of that nature that are not, that are not in, in the classroom, is that correct?
Well, I mean?
And I know it'd be a lot of funding for special ed and that sort of thing.
It would be, it, we would have to evaluate, it, it just depends upon the impact and how much it affects us. It would be very difficult to say what would be cut first. Obviously, it would depend upon whether there was a loss of students. If there was a loss of students, we would have to look at even teaching positions. If there, if it was just a loss of funding without a significant loss of, of students, then we would have to just evaluate programs at that point. It, it would be incredibly difficult for me to conjecture on what would go first. It just depended upon what the losses were, and, and if it involved losses of funding, students, or both. And that, that's just incredibly difficult to conjecture.
But a loss of students, even if it was great, and the school could also look at the closing of that school, if it, if it was great enough.
Oh, obviously, if it's concentrated in one area.
Right, right.
And, and this will impact different school districts in different ways. There will be some districts that are impacted more than Coffee County because of our location and, and that kind of thing. And again, part of what's gonna have the biggest impact on Coffee County schools will be what, what language is, is included in that as far as homeschooling, because we don't have a huge private school population. We have some, obviously, that live within our borders, but the homeschool population is significant. And, but again, until that legislation is crafted, all I can do is safely, I can, I can safely repeat what TSBA and TOS have both been saying, is that this will, this will impact the funding of public school districts. The degree depends upon the final legislation.
And I think the premise is that that, locally, we can make that funding up, is that correct? I mean, the, the reasoning behind it, because some, you know, it's gotta be made up somewhere if it's taken away from public schools.
But you won't have that child.
Yeah, but you're?
Taken away from you, you won't have that child worried about funding anyways.
But you'll still have a classroom, you know, you may have one child out of that classroom, but you still got a full-size classroom if it's just one. So you're still having to?
And that's, and that's why there, that's why there is quite a bit of discussion on both sides of this issue.
I've been reading?
If your, if your building is inviting in our system, which, you know, it is, and we don't have nothing to worry about if they do it or not, maybe.
There's nothing about this that's helpful to public education and the job we try to do day in and day out with kids.
No, but it sets up a, it sets up, in my opinion, and, and I'm, I'm free to somebody to change my mind, too. But to me, it, it feels almost like the fight against the parent's right to place that child where they feel that child could do the best into, okay, you live on this address, you're gonna go to this school, how dare you try to cut my money? That child's gonna go here, or you're gonna pay elsewhere to do whatever, is almost like setting up the revolving door of, we don't care about our proficiency, and we just want that money, and we just want those kids running through like cattle. I, I, there again, that's, don't halfway make sense.
Well, you have to look at it this way, too. I think most of us up here could afford to send our child to a private school. A lot of people can't. The tuition part is minor, a lot of times, compared to other expenses that are incurred, the transportation, the, even the means of knowing where, so it's, a lot of kids that, that would, you know, maybe like the option of going to private school, that's not gonna help them. The ones that's already has the privilege of that, it's gonna help those. Just get a stop, and, I, I mean, I'm just, just thinking out loud and reasoning with you.
And the drawback to our system would be, like I say, open classrooms.
Right.
Potentially having to cut staff if we lost enough students. Buses, not as many, I think we just start shrinking.
I think it's important, too, to look at the fact that the, the system, that, that was fine as long as it was just Memphis and, you know, Nashville, and didn't impact our lives. The jury is still out on how effective the vouchers have been, because the schools that they're going to are not held to the same level of accountability as public schools are. And so, yeah, the money, the money would be going, our public schools would be losing the money. It would be going into private schools, yet those private schools, those, those schools have not been held to the same level of accountability. And we don't even know how effective as a state that the, the limited voucher program that's in place right now has been. We don't know if it worked or not. We don't know, we don't know if it has positively impacted somebody's life. And, you know, there's a, there's a lack of accountability there that irritates me, for, for lack of a better word, because I know what these people have to go into a classroom and do every day, and I know some of the ridiculous things that they are required to do in order to check boxes off to satisfy the state of Tennessee. And to say, well, we're gonna suck all this money out of public school, and we're gonna let you take this money and go over here. Well, I, I think my child would be better in homeschool, and I mean, if that is what you want to do, that is great. I personally had a kid come back to us, Tallahoma High School from homeschool for two years. She had one credit, and it was in etiquette, and I didn't even know you could get a credit in that. But under this, under this proposal by Governor Lee, her homeschool could have gotten that money. And so, I, I, it, we've invested a lot of money into public schools. And it's, you know, whether you think you've got your money's worth out of it or not, it is a noble cause that we serve to educate every child that comes through the door. What kind of school am I thinking of? Well, a, a private school, any private school, has the option of saying, no, I don't think we want to take you. They don't have to take you, you're not entitled to a private school education. So they could take their voucher and, and, you know, shop it around somewhere else. But I just do not see how in any way, shape, or form that this would benefit public schools.
For what it's worth, I've been reading a lot from Tennessee stands, and apparently the homeschoolers do not want this either.
Really?
They like doing their own thing, they don't want a government overreach, how many of them look at it, and they don't?
Which is why some of them are homeschooling anyway.
Exactly, yeah. So?
But isn't this a slap in our teachers' face to say they can go to a private school or whatever where they're not held to the same accountability, but we're gonna hold you up here, and we're gonna critique you on this level?
And you can, in your curriculum, you can have a rich curriculum that the teacher deems important, and just have an entirely different platform than public schools. And, and taxpayers are paying for that. And just let me say for the record, my children have been in private school. You know, and, and I never once asked anybody to give me any money to help pay for it. That was a faith-based decision that I made, and so I paid that money for that. And I realize that's not something that's an option for everybody.
When your kids were in private school, they, they didn't, there was no testing, no standards they were up to?
No, we took the Iowa test of basic skills, but no, we weren't, we, we didn't have any?
Third grade retention?
No.
I rest my case.
Heavens, no. I mean, unless the Pope said we had to do it, no.
I'm saying, I rest my case.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, there's a little arguments both ways on that, but interesting, okay. But I, I agree with Jennifer, the, the homeschoolers are not interested in this, because it means that funding comes with government strings, and they're not interested in the government strings. They'd rather forego the funding, as they always have, and so you're basically dealing with private schools or? So that, that's really the discussion I think is here, is not homeschoolers. Most of them aren't gonna take the money. Questions or concerns?
So one, one thing, and this is probably opening a real can of worms, though, but, but if you do do a voucher program, and I can't believe I'm gonna launch into this, but, but then you take maybe some of the better kids out of the program, and now we need, now we shift the population to more special needs kids, which get more funding from, from TESA, but does that, how does that affect the whole shift of funds and, and the services we provide as well? I mean, is, is there a danger of that happening even?
I, while, understand, there's, there's different tiers, like you mentioned special education funding. There's different tiers. I can, I can safely say, and I, and I may defer? defer to Mr. Westmoreland on this, but there are none of those tiers that actually truly give you the amount of money it takes to work with that child. For example, our highest needs children, uh, off Dr. Penneyius or Mr. Westmoreland, do you remember how much more those highest need children get?
The highest, I mean, option 10, that's the highest.
Yeah.
But that's a homebound student who's getting a full realm of services provided in the home.
And so, it, at a hun- so, a hundred and fifty percent, so you're talking about seven, let's say, seven thousand, how about ten thousand five hundred? And understand something, ten thousand five hundred, our highest need students have a one-on-one aide. Ten thousand five hundred doesn't even pay for the aide for that child, much less the materials, much less the teacher, much less any of that. So, it's, there's, those, those funding levels come nowhere near reality of what it costs to educate a child with needs. And that's, that's where we are. So, there's no, there's no benefit to the concentration of funding. We just, uh, we just lose, we lose the...
No, 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 I mean, it costs us more, because we're having a greater proportion.
That would be an act...
Is there a danger of that even happening, I guess, is what, I mean?
Possibility.
Uh, yes. My impression is, yes, there would be a danger of that happening, uh, in, in that situation, yes.
You could flip your entire demographics.
I think we're ready to vote, whether to send this or not. Okay, so the, the item, the action item is to, to approve the resolution.
And if, if, if you vote yes, you are voting to oppose the Governor's Education Freedom Act.
Right, approve the resolution which opposes.
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. So, Mr. Ballard, you get the first vote.
Okay, I guess I'm, I kinda flip-flop back and forth on this, but I'll, I'll, uh, say yea.
Mr. Gilli?
I'm like Mr. Ballard, but I'll say yea.
I'm the same, but I'll say aye.
You gonna say yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, let's send it.
Aye.
That passes the resolution, the send-to resolution passes eight to zero. All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Jones, uh, action item number ten, two point eight oh four, the policy, you wanted to pull that one out?
Yeah, that, um... Okay, that, you're gonna do that one first, okay. Okay, on the, I, I didn't get to attend, I'm on the policy committee, and, and my husband was sick, and I didn't get to attend. And, uh, I saw that we were changing the policy for expenses and reimbursements. And, um, I know there had been some discussion about that prior in a, uh, board work session. And, uh, I just had some questions about it. And I looked at some of the other, uh, policies for neighboring systems, and they all had a similar policy that we had in place. None of them are in, have gone into detail like this one. And, uh, I guess my question is, did, was this recommended by the TSBA to change ours?
TSBA had a very generalized policy, and that's, that is what, that's why you see a lot of similarities in other districts. These changes were recommended due to the auditor from the Comptroller's Office, uh, saying, suggesting that we have more definition. Is that pretty much, uh, Ms. Melson is the one who had the conversation with the auditor, so I'm gonna let her address at least that part and those suggestions in that.
So, yeah, so we get audited, all, our, most of our travel gets audited, almost every travel form that we have come through Central Office gets audited. And there were just so many questions around, okay, what do you, what do you pay for mileage, or why did you do this, or why? And so, basically, they told me that our travel policy need to be more specific, on what our procedures are for each area of travel. And that, I used that guidance to build this policy.
Okay. Would that be in policy or procedures? Because, um, I've looked at Franklin County, there's this one page, uh, similar to what we had. Um, I did Grundy County, same. Uh, Manchester City, the same. Uh, Rosford County, the same. Uh, Tallahoma City, practically the same as what we had. Uh, Warren County, practically the same. Williamson County was a little bit more specific, but only one page. And I'll get into that in just a second, but, uh, I, I just want the board members to see these.
First of all, we may kinda be out of order here. Let, we need to get a motion to...
Oh, okay.
To, and that's fine, that's your fault, it's my fault. Um, let's get a, a motion to pass two point eight oh four on the first reading, and a second, and then we'll continue. So, do I have a motion to pass this policy on the first reading?
I'll make a motion to...
Okay.
Mr. Parshley makes a motion.
I'll, I'll second that, since I voted for it on the, uh, policy.
Mr. Ballard?
Okay, now, go ahead, continue.
Okay, uh, I just thought maybe the board members might like to see the policies from the other systems, because...
Oh, that's, oh, he's...
He's passing on down, there's just one.
No, I will say...
First of all, um, we changed, uh, where it says, I'm, under school personnel, I see nothing there that really makes a difference. We'll get down to the board members part. And, uh, uh, we marked out some things. It says, the members of the board shall be reimbursed for, and we marked out, transportation, lodging, meals, and other. It says, the members of the board shall be reimbursed for pertinent expenses. Who's gonna determine what pertinent expenses are?
Uh, those were simply crossed out, because they are repeated in subheadings under general guidelines. So, like, we crossed out transportation. It, it, it talks about mileage under general guidelines. We crossed out the word lodging there, because it reappears as subheading number four, under general guidelines. So, each of those were crossed out, because it was moved down into the general guidelines. So, they're not removed, they just simply, since they were being moved from there to another spot, that's why they're struck out in that language. So, each of those, each of those things, meals, for example, shows up as subheading three. So, they're crossed out on, if you're looking at it, they're crossed out on line sixteen?
I see, but I don't agree with that. But, anyway, um, why would you mark that out there? I mean, 'cause it's, e- even though it's referred later, because it just says the, the members of the board shall be reimbursed for pertinent expenses. To me, it needs to be defined in that area. But anyway, um, I know the other part that was marked out, thirty days, that's, uh, you put that somewhere else. But then we get into general guidelines. Uh, you've got that the reimbursement rate for mileage will remain the same, so forth, and it'll be computed from the official worksite, and all that's good, which we already knew to begin with. Uh, parking fees, of course, you'd have to have a receipt for a parking fee. Uh, meals. And, uh, this is where I have an issue, uh, with going into this much detail, and then putting some of these things in here. Um, it says, reimbursement for meals shall be on a per diem basis, in accordance with the State of Tennessee Department of Finance Administration, as listed on the travel expense claim form, which is good. Receipts must be attached to the reimbursement request for all meals, and will be reimbursed for the amount up to the per diem amount. So, what we're saying is, you're, what's in here, if the meal receipt is less than the per diem, the reimbursement will be made for the meal amount. So, what we're doing, we're, we are saying, we're telling our teachers, or anybody that goes to a workshop, anybody that goes to a conference, that they will not get their per diem per day. If they don't eat breakfast, they get nothing for that. If they get a sausage and biscuit for a dollar, they get a dollar. Uh, they're not getting a per diem for that day, in case they wanted to eat their lunch or their dinner, and have enough money to pay for it. And this is gonna be a nightmare for bookkeeping, because there's gonna have to be a receipt for every meal. And, uh, if it's five dollars and sixty cents, they've got to de- deduct that from the amount, that would be the per diem. This is getting down in the, in, it's ridiculous.
From the bookkeeping standpoint?
I can, yeah, I can speak to that. I think, um, the couple of different people that handle this issue, it's more, yes, it's gonna be a little bit of a challenge, but we have, still have challenges right now, where if the lunch is provided at a conference or breakfast, we have to go figure that out, because we can't reimburse someone if a lunch or a breakfast has already been reimbursed.
Oh, I understand that.
So, there's a lot going on with meals, and I think this may clarify, and it helps...
Then that need, you need to go ahead and put another line in there. If you eat breakfast at the conference, you will not get reimbursed. Everybody should know that, that if you, if your meal is provided, you do not turn that in on the sheet, that you're asking for reimbursement for breakfast when you had it with the conference. That's a no-brainer. Uh, I just think we're just getting too silly about some of this stuff. For instance, look at Williamson County. I put them in alphabetical order. All right, Williamson County, and, uh, there's this one page, and they, and down on line twelve, or line eleven and twelve, it says, uh, well, first of all, I'll read the, the part where it says, they'll shall be reimbursed, blah, blah, blah. It says, in such event, the superintendent of schools may modify the reimbursement rates during the budget year to reflect the change. Except for authorized per diem charges, all reimbursement claims must be supported, supported by adequate documentation, which includes actual receipts. So, what they're saying is, you need receipts for parking, you need receipts for your conference registration, uh, and that sort of thing, except for authorized per diem charges. So, that is releasing people from having to bring a receipt for each, uh, meal, and bookkeeping having to go through it and get down to the penny of how much, uh, they can't pay that teacher. And, uh, I've talked with other people at other school systems, and they do not do that. They pay them per diem. They don't ask, they don't have receipts. Uh...
I'm sorry, Tallahoma, no, I had to turn a receipt in every time I got a happy meal.
I mean, that... Did they, did they give you the full amount, or did they deduct?
I, I never, I never got a per diem for anything till I sat on this school board. I, I had to turn a receipt in.
Did they reimburse your whole receipt, your whole amount?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Okay, we don't. We don't, we do a per diem. We don't reimburse the whole amount.
And I have talked to Tallahoma's finance director, and they're, they're in the process of changing theirs as well. I've, I've worked, I've been working with him, and he's called for a lot, he's had, called me for several questions, and they're in the process of changing theirs.
Well, I just think that's a slap in the face to a teacher, to anyone that goes to a conference, that they, if they decide they don't want breakfast, and they're gonna keep what little they're getting to eat lunch or dinner, which doesn't even cover those meals, we're gonna pay them zero. If you, and, and that goes back to mileage. We're paying a per diem for mileage. You get a per diem per month, don't you, for mileage, for being director of schools?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Do you turn in, uh, gas receipts?
Uh, not, not under my circumstances.
Okay. Well, that, to me, that's the same. We go to conferences, we get paid mileage. We don't turn in, show them we put gas in the car. I mean, what, so what we're basically doing is saying we put food in our mouth.
So, do we, all right, so I guess our options are to approve this?
If, it, it can be approved, and the changes would be adopted. If it's not approved, then it reverts back to the old policy.
It goes back to policy.
Okay, well, then, there's one other thing, too, on line fourteen, uh, where it says, and this is contradictory. It says, preapproval for lodging is required, and payment should be accomplished to the district office. So, that means that no lodging can be, uh, acquired unless it's preapproved through the office, and the check is cut for the amount that would be for, uh, uh, the stated conference, uh, amount for a room. So, the preapproval is required, and payment should be accomplished to the district office. Then the second line after that says, lodging arrangements made outside the district office can be reimbursed up to the State of Tennessee lodging per diem rate. If it's gotta be preapproved, and it's paid upfront, how can you reimburse?
Well, that's, that is saying lodging is required and that kind of thing. But if, if, if a person elects to make arrangements outside the central office, that is what we're allowed to reimburse up to.
How can you elect to do it if it says preapproval is required? I mean, there's no election to it. If, if preapproval for lodging is required, so if we do that outside the district office, there's no reimbursement.
The pre, the preapproval there would be, if the board decides to go to Summer Law in Gatlinburg, that, which is a standing, which is a standing professional development for the board, that preapproval for lodging is, is accomplished at that point. I mean, that's, it's not, it's, I don't believe that's talking about the preapproval of that specific hotel. It is preapproval that there is a trip being made, and there's lodging. So, we're gonna make the lodging arrangements inside the district office, so we can control the expense and, and make sure that it's done correctly. But if somebody elects to move outside the district office, they can re, be reimbursed up to the State of Tennessee lodging per diem rate.
How can you elect to do that without preapproval?
Okay, what I'm saying is, the trip has been approved. That's the preapproval for lodging. If you're gonna, if you're gonna do it, if you're gonna do a professional development trip to Gatlinburg, the board deciding to take that trip is the preapproval. Now, that wording is also for, for example, and these are general guidelines, so that wording right there is for teachers. If a, if a teacher is going to go somewhere and they want lodging, then they need to get it preapproved through a supervisor, or through the central office, or even the board. The board does their own preapproval by simply approving that they're going to attend certain events. I don't...
This is, this is just very...
You're saying registering you for the conference is preapproved?
Is the preapproval.
But that's not what this is saying. This says, preapproval for lodging is required, and payment should be accomplished to the district office. That means you've gotta go get a check from the central office and take it with you to that lodging. It's gotta be preapproved first, then you gotta get a check, 'cause it's accomplished through the district office, you take that with you. Then, it says, the next sentence is, lodging arrangements made outside the district office can be reimbursed. So, I mean, that's contradictory. That, I mean, I, this needs...
All I can tell you is, if there is no check, there, that's, that's just, it won't be a trip.
It's just, it's, it's just, this is gone down in, we've, we've gotten too many details. This, you know, this is, there, there's procedures for things, and it should not be included in all this. This is just a reflection of an incident that happened that, uh, just got out of hand.
And Ms. Melson, you said that you, this, this was, a lot of this came about because you were requesting to do this.
That's correct. So, when we get audited...
What other systems were doing, but, but our system was being...
And I did use, and I, I did use Marion, I looked at Marion County, they, they were very specific, and, um, I can't, I can't remember the other. Um, the auditors, we are audited to our policies. So, when an auditor comes to me and says, wh- why did you do this? It's not in policy. That's a potential finding. And then they can pull multiple things like that, and that becomes, that grows and grows and grows, and become an issue. So, when, when this issue came up, the auditor told, our senior auditor told me that we need to be more specific on what we are actually, actually doing in our policy. And so, she recommended that we redo our policy, and, and so that's what we've done.
And she recommended this?
She sent me a sample of the state policy of what they follow.
Okay, and the state policy's what we had?
No, it's not the state policy. We, we amended...
She sent you what?
She sent me a copy of the state policy and what they follow. As an example, I didn't use that policy. I went and looked for other school districts that had things laid out like this.
Okay, so you're saying the comptroller is the one that told you to do this?
Yes.
Not Dr. Lawson?
No, yes, yes, ma'am. The comptroller's office told me to do this. And it's been multiple conversations, it's not just been one.
This was not, this was not a personal mission on my part directed towards any individual. We are simply trying to follow the advice of the auditor. That's all.
And I will speak that my department is excited about this, because this helps them do their job better.
Well, I, I beg to differ.
It just makes us have clear-cut answers on how we can reimburse and what we can do.
Okay, so we're really, this house, the comptroller, uh, they need to get in touch with these other school systems, and, uh, let them come up with something like this, because we're the only ones that are doing it.
I understand that, but I'm just going off bases of who I have as an auditor, and what they've told me multiple times.
All right. So, this is action item number ten. Alright, so this is action item number ten, two point, um, eight oh four, first reading, the policy. And a yes vote will be to approve it, a no vote will be to, to not, to, to send it back to policy. Mr. Gilli, you're first.
Great. I mean, this is, this is what we talked about and I, I can follow it. I'm, I'm a yee.
Okay, Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No.
Aye.
Approve it at the, uh, policy, aye. Chair votes aye. First reading, it passes six to two. Action item number eleven, one point eight zero one. And so let's go ahead and get a motion and a second to approve the first reading of this one, if we can. So I'd like to open the floor for a motion to accept one point eight oh one. Mr. Parsley, and who will make the second?
Second.
Alright, so now, Ms. Jones, you want to speak on two point?
No, I don't.
I'm sorry, one point.
I didn't want to speak. I just wanted to ask, just clarification of what that five minutes? I, you know, I think the people that weren't on the policy committee, why that was changed.
Yes, go ahead, Dr. Lawson, that'd be great.
What this was, was our existing policy had seven and a half hours. When we went through collaborative conferencing here about a year and a half ago, in, in talking about defining the contract day, that came up in collaborative conferencing. We looked at it, the, the administration looked at it, the teachers looked at it, and if, we realized with certain bus routes and with certain timings and that kind of thing, seven and a half hours wasn't quite enough time that we could guarantee it, and it came out to be seven hours and thirty-five minutes. So that was approved by the, that was approved by the teachers and by the administration that was in the collaborative conferencing. It became part of the MOU and that was approved by the board last September. In reviewing this policy, we realized that board policy and the MOU, both approved by the board, are not in alignment. And so all this does is add that five minutes in there to make our policy and the MOU align. And the MOU is what was agreed upon by the teachers and the, and the administration in collaborative conferencing. So this simply brings our policy into alignment with the existing MOU. And that's all that is. And that was agreeable to the teacher groups and to the administration at that time. Now it's just, and the board approved it at that time. We just realized that our policy is out of alignment.
So item number seven, one point eight oh one, first reading, we're voting to approve. Mr. Cordell?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, that passes, passes eight to zero. Now, if the board does not object, I may go ahead and let the student ambassador speak right now because they have got one, at least one of them, maybe both have something, it, like two minutes. So, uh, if, if that's okay, I'm gonna let them go ahead and have their, uh, have their talk. And thank you for staying. Ms. Helms, you're first.
Since Mr. Parsley had to leave, um, I'm gonna talk about, we have a program called Steer Straight that is coming to speak to our students on January tenth. It's a ninety-minute program about drug education. I'm not sure when it'll take place. I assume probably like an assembly, maybe during homeroom or during class. Um, then after school, there's a professional development for the school staff that they can attend, um, speaking on the same thing. And then there's a parent academy after school at five. Um, they'll go over the same ninety-minute program with the parents as they did with the students. And it is just about drug education and kind of like dare in elementary school, but I guess a little bit higher of a level.
Thank you.
Basketball plays at Telahoma this Friday, so that should be a good game. Um, our band and choir both had successful concerts recently and they sounded great and it had a big turnout. Lots, lots of people were there. Wrestling and swim are both in season as well and wrestling had a match on Friday and they lost to Riverdale, but, um, our winter sports are doing pretty good, so that's good.
Any questions for Riley or Ella today? Thank you very much. Thank you for staying. Alright, we will go back to, uh, items for discussion. Um, is there anything, Mr. Ballard, we'll start down there. Is anything that you need to address or?
I, you know, just going back to, um, our, our vote on policy two point eight oh four, I would not be opposed to it on the second reading. Is making a motion on that to bounce it back to the committee for, for policy committee for further discussion in the January meeting? If Ms. Jones is okay with that?
Yes.
Mr. Parsley? Anything today?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Jennifer?
I went to my first wrestling match meet. How do you say this? I think I saw you there for the middle school and I'd never seen anything like that before, but I thought they did really well. And from what I have heard, they have a really great wrestling team, group. I don't know the, the lingo for wrestling, but I thought that was cool and.
Did you say wrestling or wrestling?
Oh, I'm not a wrestler. I think wrestling. Um, I guess that's it. Wrestling. It was scary to me. My nephew was out there. I didn't like it at all, but I was really proud of everybody. But, um, I guess just Merry Christmas, everyone. I'm looking forward to our next year of arguing and back and forth.
Ms. Jones?
And Happy Birthday, Robert, again.
Yes.
You'll sing? No, I won't do that.
I'll sing.
No, please.
Got anything, Robert?
Thank you.
Yeah, uh, yeah, and, and they, the wrestling team did do, they went to, there are sixteen teams in our
Region.
Region and they qualified to go to the top eight teams and they ended up third in the, we're talking, uh, the Murfreesboro team, so this is the second year they've had a program. So they, they did wonderfully well and we beat Telahoma finally, the first time all year. Happened to be about one, so, uh, but it was very good. I just want to say, the, the, the bus driver breakfast was great. Uh, they're, they're very appreciative and that's one of the very positive things that I've participated on the board and, and I think that was very good. And I think those employees were very respectful and very appreciative of, of what we offered.
It was a good meeting, a good day.
It was, it was really good and so, and, and thank y'all for who all organized that, uh, and getting it all pulled together. Um, it's a good job.
Yeah, we need to recognize Bobby Cummins. He started that years ago.
Did he?
He sure did.
Well, what, then, that, that was a, a very good point. It's, uh, uh, it, it seemed like every year it's strong and it's a great thing.
Right.
Alright, principals, who've we got? Ms. Parsley, you want, you want to come to the microphone again?
We have a lot of stuff going on at Deerfield. Um, our second grade went to the Chattanooga Aquarium. Our fourth grade went to the Sam Davis Home. Uh, the ball tournaments finished up this past weekend and our girls went, placed second in the silver division. And I have to say that our boys, uh, they did not, they went to the semifinals and they lost in the semifinals, but they only had two losses for the whole season. So they were a really great team, but they lost to a really great team as well. Um, we, tomorrow night, we have our winter showcase. We start with the cookie and hot chocolate reception and then we have the, uh, play toys. Our chorus, our band and our ukulele club, and we also have a theater club. So they're all putting that production on tomorrow night. So if you'd like to come out, it's at five o'clock and the play starts at six. Uh, let's see, uh, we also tomorrow have our Christmas lunch for the fifth grade parents and the first grade parents. And Thursday, we have the second quarter citizenship celebration for all the students have excellent behavior for the second quarter. They get a popcorn and a movie and we will have a lot of students attending that because we have great value Deerfield. So, that's what we got.
Any questions for our?
I, I would like to, uh, just compliment you on Deerfield. Because I can remember when they did not have enough kids to even participate, or not the, not the enrollment number, but not enough kids went out for the basketball program, that they didn't have enough to have a team. And, and y'all, y'all have really brought that school up. And, and they're participating and doing well. It's wonderful to see that.
Thank you. We got a lot of things going on. It's a great school out there, so thank you.
John, thank you. Alright, um, committee reports?
Uh, yes, we've had a couple of committee meetings. The calendar committee, uh, has met in the last month and you see the results of their work, uh, action item number two. Capital Projects met, uh, we, we had two commissioners that were going to join us for a discussion on East Coffee and Hickerson, but only one had some conflict, a conflict that came up at the last minute and so we ended up with one commissioner there. Uh, everybody present said to go ahead and move forward with, uh, with at least the next step in getting more exact figures on East Coffee and Hickerson. And so we will be, we'll be moving forward with that after the holidays. We could not realistically get an RFQ to bid process together before the holidays. So that will be one of the first items of business that Mr. Shores will be working on after the holidays, is getting that RFQ for engineering and architecture services for those two jobs. Uh, we have a sickly bank committee meeting this week and compensation and policy will be coming up before the next meeting or, or very soon thereafter. So you can keep an eye on an email. We'll probably be, if we can get that organized, we're gonna try to have the, one of those, one for compensation and one for policy as soon as possible.
We've already had the student ambassador report and so the directors report.
Alright, I've already mentioned the RFQ, uh, and the board dinner is tomorrow, uh, at five o'clock at the high school. We also have, uh, the phase one, uh, board members should have received a digital link, a link to a digital copy of phase one at the high school that, uh, the, the environmental test or, uh, for, that was voted into place and moving forward. Uh, let's see, the next stage, that's, that's for the CTE building at the high school. The next stage for that is to, uh, to appear before the city planning committee Monday night at six o'clock. I will be at, in attendance with OLG who is handling the engineering services there as, uh, as we look at getting approval for that since it is inside this, the, uh, city limit. I believe that's kind of a, a, a more of an updated thing. That's not traditionally been the route. It, it actually caught OLG a little bit by surprise because they had not been asked to, uh, to do that for, for a structure, but, uh, but we have been, so I do not anticipate any problems on Monday night. We're not asking the city for anything. We're, we're following all the procedures and that kind of thing. It's just a form, I believe it's just a formality, but we'll know more, uh, at that point. Um, let's see. Oh, I'm trying to make sure I, oh, one thing, we had a final meeting with the auditor today, Ms. Melson and I did this morning. Once again, Ms. Melson has guided the district through with a clean audit. There are no audit findings for another year. So she's kept her perfect streak alive. And so that is her, her working with the comptroller's office and the auditors to make sure that, uh, all our Ts are crossed and all our Is are dotted, uh, has been valuable. Uh, let's see, we have a middle school choir and band concert that starts at six o'clock this evening. So that's going to create, uh, a little bit of a challenge. Let's see, and then as far as an S or O, I will mention this. Some of you may have noticed, I'm kinda coughing and hacking. I've been, I'm, I don't have COVID and I don't have flu. I'm not sure what I have, but there are other respiratory illnesses that exist and, uh, and that's, that has been something that, uh, some other students and staff have been struggling with. Uh, but I know that occasionally board members like to have an update for COVID numbers at least. Now, understand, we don't have numbers for the cold. I mean, we just don't. There's not a test for the cold and we don't, we don't have one. But we do have tests for COVID and flu. So we have ten COVID cases so far in December, which is a little bit more than in November, but nowhere near the hundred and twenty-three we had in August. And so if you remember, there were some emails that I sent you keeping you updated in August as we saw those numbers increase. But then we had that long four-day thing around Labor Day and that seemed to have helped that. So we don't have anywhere near the number that we had at the beginning of the year. Flu numbers in August, we had three. In December, we have eight. So by, by standards, typical standards in a school district, uh, eight and ten on two respiratory illnesses that are quite prolific. That's not bad at all, but it doesn't mean that we're in the clear. We've, again, I think it's just the season for sniffles and, and that's what we have. And so that's, that's where we are. Uh, so that's, that's my last part of my update as far as the S or update. The chiller at CCR A, that is being paid for with S or funds as we said earlier. And we will be getting together as an admin team on January eleventh because once we hit Christmas, we are six months away from the deadline on S or and we're gonna sit down January eleventh and see where we are and break down any overages and start consolidating that and, uh, try to give the board a, a more concise update on our expenditures at the next meeting after that one.
Well, circling back around to the phase one report, I reviewed it in great detail and they had a number of recommendations in there. Obviously, there's been some relatively recent methane violations at the northern boundary of the landfill. And they recommended in the phase one, the vapor barrier, which, which we'd already been proceeding with. But they also recommended a vapor capture system, which is kind of a venting system generally. Is OLG looking at, at doing that or, or is it, because the vapor barriers is not gonna be very expensive. Um, a venting system would be more expensive, so.
I'll also pass that report over to OLG and ask for their guidance on what we need to do to, to move forward with it as we're building the, the shop.
Okay, so we'll see some recommendations come back from OLG?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
I have a question about that. Go ahead.
We're, we're, also, we're supposed to be getting a, um, you know, I'm trying to think of the right wording, from, uh, Terracotta, uh, some proposals as well. Uh, so they're in communication as well. But I don't know they would be just coming back to the board. We, we need to include those into the, uh, the, the site in, in doing the prep.
When does the grant expire that Mr. Skipper?
It was a, I believe a four-year grant, is that right? Three, or three, three-year.
But we're not pushing it. Everything's okay.
We're, we're still okay. Uh, we're, we're further behind than I'd like for us to be, but.
But we're not in danger. Okay, good.
Yes, this, uh, on this, we're not worried about the funds expiring. We're just wanting to make sure everything's available. We just want a shop available for our students as quickly as realistically possible.
This city thing is interesting.
Uh, it's, it's kinda, it's, uh, my impression from what OLG has said is that this is not something they've hit before. That they, and so, uh. I think there's a change in who's over that, that part. Uh, the way I understood, there's a new person, but I, so that might be the reason why. I'm not sure.
I don't think the county land's even annexed by the city, is it? We're, we're, we're zoned out strictly county, I, I do believe.
No, that was in the city when it was built.
Uh, it's, it's. But still, I think the county land is still like a little blank spot in the city map.
I'm not sure, I'm not, I know it's inside the city limits, but I'm not sure if it's a carve-out. Again, I, I think this, I don't anticipate any problems. I believe this will end up being a formality. It will absolutely shock me if we come and say, hey, we're trying to do this for kids. It's not costing the city a dime. We're trying to do all this kind of stuff and then they say no. I mean, that would just, that, that doesn't make any sense at all. But, uh, but no, that's, so I don't, I don't anticipate it being a problem. It's just something, it's something nobody anticipated because it's not a step that we've had to engage in in the past. And so that's, I, that's probably one of the reasons that work, earthwork hasn't already started is we're waiting for that.
That is a reason.
That is. And, uh, and so. That is. And, uh, and so we're gonna.
Interesting.
We're gonna, I, basically, if, if, if a government that controls our permit says we need to do something, then we're gonna show up at that meeting and, and we're gonna, we're gonna do that.
Okay. Uh, couple announcements and they may have already been made, but let me reiterate them. Uh, the sick leave bank committee meeting, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three at four P M. here at the Coffey County Board of Education. School board Christmas dinner tomorrow night, December twelfth, two thousand twenty-three at Coffey County Central High School, beginning at five. Next school board meeting is scheduled to be January eighth, twenty twenty-four at four thirty P M. here at the Board of Education. And I just want to, one thing I didn't say earlier is, uh, kind of condolences to the Vincent family. I know he did not teach in this system, but their family is heavily involved with us and he's contributed a lot to the community and that was very sad and just my condolences go out to them. And I would, uh, like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Favor, say hi.
Aye.
Aye, but don't we, do you need this signed?
Uh, do we need each of them to, yes, if, uh, any board members, I'm glad.